Everybody, right, welcome to our full council of Northumberland County Council. Before we move on to anything, remember we are televised or filmed, so please bear that in mind. And we are in Purde. Once, quick announcement, item 10 on your agenda is going to be deferred, so that it goes to the local area planning chairs, the local area council chairs, and the central planning or the strategic planning chairs for their view on those items. Are we happy with that and it'll come back next meeting? Happy? Okay, thank you. Apologies for absence. Karen?
Councillor Blowie, Anne O'Pattan.
Any from the floor?
Yeah, we've got Susan, Katie, Julie Foster, Alan Petto, Liz Simpson and Mr Levan.
Anybody else? Everybody's here. I think everybody else is here. Okay, let's move on. Minutes, we have the minutes of the meeting held on the 1st of May. Do we agree they are a correct record? Great, thank you. Disclosure of members' interests. Any member wants to declare an interest? Strange. Announcements. Well, I can read out the Queen's Birthday Honour list for this county. Queen's Fire Service Medal, Chief Fire Officer Paul Headley, the Thumberland Fire and Rescue Service. MBE, Michael Ridstal Hepple, Senior Delivery Lead, Operational Excellent, Digital Services Automation, Her Majesty's Revenue and Customs for services to taxpayers, Northumberland. You've got one, all right. David Lockwood-Mowbray for community services in the UK and abroad, from Cramnithon. British Empire Medal, Robert George Bruce Grant for services to charity, Northumberland. James Alexander Thompson for services to the community in Anick, Northumberland. And Dorothy Anne Wonacott for public and political services, New Begin by the Sea, Northumberland. So, round of applause for all those, thank you. I have no further announcements, I'll go to the leader announcements.
Right, thank you Chair. This council and this county have again been recognised in several awards, and I have four in particular. Firstly, congratulations to Kelly Angus, our Executive Director of HR and Deputy Chief Executive. At the Chartered Institute of Personnel Development last week, she was named the Inspirational Practitioner of 2019. And also congratulations to our Flood and Coastal Erosions team, who won the Community Partnership Award at the Flood and Coast Awards last week for the Tyne Green project in Hexham. And congratulations to active Northumberland employee Delia Evans, who has recently been awarded the Outstanding Employee of the Year by Community Leisure UK. Delia is a catering supervisor in the cafe at Morpeth Riverside Leisure Centre, and she's worked there for 25 years. And finally, in the North East Culture Awards, particularly well done to Woodhorn for being awarded the Best Museum of the Year in the North East, that's quite immaculate. So thank you very much to all of them.
Correspondence, I have none. Not even a magazine for grant. So, straight on to questions. Question one, councillor Hill.
Thank you. Question two, councillor Sanderson. How much does the Thumblin County Council charge for burials in each of the cemeteries it owns? This is to include plot as well as actual burial costs. How does the average cost compare to five and 10 years ago? What are the reasons for any differences in charges across the county? Is there any evidence that town and parish council managed cemeteries charge less? If so, why is that the case?
There is about four questions, so I'll allow them though. Councillor Sanderson?
Thank you. The county council have 23 cemeteries, and they are... If you buy a plot and you get buried in that plot, it costs you now £2,000. £2,016. Five years ago it was £1,285, and 10 years ago it was £710. We are not the most expensive however, and we have no plans to increase the price next financial year. Some of the smaller cemeteries that are run by parish and town councils don't have the overheads that we have, in terms of maintenance, in terms of future investment, drainage, and so on. So, the cost to parish and town council cemeteries is lower because they don't have as many burials as we do.
Supplementary?
Thank you. Appreciate a written answer and perhaps more detail because it's obviously quite a big area within. But, do you share my concerns that given the cost for people to be buried, that residents in Bearock are having to bring their own strimmers to cut round their loved ones' graves? And that my colleague councillor Offhead, who Tweedmae Cemetery falls in his patch, is using his own small schemes to put in an additional tap in that facility. Do you share those concerns?
Councillor Sand?
Well, I don't know the details of that because neither you or the councillor beside you have been in touch with me as far as I remember. If you had been, then I will have got an answer for you. The cost of maintenance is of course very high and we do the very best we can. And generally, our cemeteries are kept in very good condition, much to the pleasure of those relatives who have to visit them.
Thank you. Question two, councillor Hill to the leader.
Thank you, to the leader. What sort of things are discussed and agreed on at meetings referred to as informal cabinet?
Leader?
Yeah, thank you. I'm not quite sure why this question's coming up before council because this is just part of the normal process of running a larger organisation. And I think if you look at all large councils up and down the country, they will have a similar process. But we're absolutely determined to have what we call a one-council approach in Northumberland. So you have to find a way of coordinating all sections, all departments of the council, with the officers and also with the cabinet members. So we do have regular meetings to actually coordinate strategy and look at delivery. As you well know, formal decisions are made in formal cabinet meetings and then endorsed by the full council here.
Supplementary?
Thank you. Just to clarify then, there would be no grounds for the public to be concerned that meaningful discussions and debates have been held behind closed doors and these should be held in the public cabinet meetings?
Yeah, as I said, it's quite simple. All important decisions are actually made in public. They're made in cabinet meetings, they're scrutinised by scrutiny committees. I'm not quite sure what your implication is.
Question three, councillor Deal to councillor Riddle.
Thank you very much. What is the total number of appeals this council has received against planning decisions made by officers of this council, the Strategic Planning Committee and each area committee since July 2017 to date?
Councillor Riddle?
Get me lost in figures now, I worry.
Thank you for the question. I've got the details here of appeals received since the 1st of July 2017. Officer decisions, total appeals is 82. Strategic Committee, total appeals 2. And the area committees, the total appeals come to 18.
Supplementary?
Yes, thank you very much. I think what I would like to ask for is, we've had all these appeals and we have lost some appeals. The costs are over £100,000. What I would like to ask you is, could you put in the... All the committee papers, we get these, we get a planning list every week, every month, and in it, it says costs, and you say yes or no. Could we please ask that you actually add in the actual cost, the cost in pounds, shillings, no pence, of the cost against the council, please?
Well, I would have to take legal advice on that from Liam as to whether that would be appropriate. What I can tell you is that our appeal loss rate is very low. The government has a PI target of less than 10%, and our appeal loss rate is less than 1%. So I think as a county council, we are doing exceptionally well. You know, you can't win every appeal, that's just the way it is. But we do win the majority. And of course, the other thing that I haven't said, of all those appeals that I told you are actual made appeals, not all are pursued because quite a few applicants then put in another application and withdraw their appeal. So, you know, that is the upper limit.
Councillor Robinson, question five to councillor Homer.
Can I do number four?
Sorry.
Number five, Chair.
I wonder who were the first to spot that one?
Thank you Chair. We were sold the idea about the new North of Tyne Authority and had a cross-party support on the back of the investment coming into the region which would be solely focused on job creation and educational improvements. Also, we were told the mayor's role would be ambassadorial in nature and there would be no duplication of existing projects. I was increasingly concerned reading the literature the candidates for the new mayor's position put out at election time, given the likely costs of their projects which were included. And now we see some which duplicate projects we already have running here in this county. Having now seen the list of some of the executive jobs offered by the new mayor and the salaries as he builds up a staffing contingent from the top down, I'm wondering how much of the £20 million per annum will be left for us to bid for to try and address some of those original stated aims for our county?
Right, thank you. I hear you actually echo some concerns that I had during the election campaign because quite a number of the candidates' comments during that campaign didn't seem to me to reflect what the aims of that new authority are. And they're actually set down quite narrowly by statute what that authority is for. And I'm obviously a cabinet member at the North of Tyne Authority and I'm very conscious that that authority is not there to duplicate what this council does. So, for example, we've later in the agenda today a whole section about climate change and what this council is doing for climate change, not just in this council but in Northumberland as a whole. That's our responsibility from my point of view, and I'm looking for added value. And the added value in the new authority is in terms of growing business, it's in terms of helping our people. And that's the people who currently can't access employment actually finding mechanisms to help them into the workplace or back into the workplace. It's about trying to encourage a skills culture right through the area but in Northumberland as well. umberland as well. And it's about looking for strategic and new opportunities. So all of those things I see as very much adding value to what this council does. So I'm quite concerned that the new authority doesn't consume all of its money in its, in its own running costs. The, the income of the new authority is this twenty million pounds a year, but on top of that, they're starting to attract further money in, so there will be, for example, twenty-two million pounds in addition to that next year for adult skills and education. And we're hoping to add further things on to that. So running the new authority has been set out in its budget, which has been publicly endorsed in the authority's cabinet. And there is a running cost of one point nine million pounds, which is a significant sum, but they're hoping to do significant work. That money has been paid, not all out of the twenty million pounds a year, there is about a million pounds a year mayoral capacity fund given by central government for the running of the new authority. And we're hoping to make sure that the new authority is lean and efficient. I think the worry that we have, the, the, I think, I find this a very serious subject, so you must bear with me for, for another couple of sentences. I, 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 I do think that we all need to recognise that it's an authority that's there to actually deliver specific projects, and it should keep its overhead costs very low. And the new music I'm, I'm sort of finding at the moment from that authority is that they're wanting to expand into other things, and I very much do not support that.
Supplementary? No? Well, okay, now with question five. Microphone?
Thank you. To councillor Homer. I've just read of our intent to offer armed forces family a free day access to our Act of Northumberland Leisure Centres. Whilst I applaud this initiative, can we not do a little better and offer old armed forces veterans free lifetime access in recognition of their service?
Councillor Homer?
Thank you and thank you for the question. The county council was very pleased to negotiate the promotion of this offer with Act of North umberland, together with a number of other offers, which I think you all had receipt of from Democratic Services. And it was very much about celebrating Armed Forces Week in Northumberland. And I think it's fair to say that the county council does recognise the service and contribution of all our armed forces personnel, whether they're still serving, and of course, veterans. And they make a real contribution to the county, and this is recognised by the council's achievement of the Ministry of Defence's Employer Recognition Scheme Gold Award that we won in two thousand and eighteen. And that was for the outstanding support for the military community and the armed forces government, and I'm sure you remember that well. The county council has forwarded your request to Act of Northumberland, and as you know, they're a charity which provide leisure services in our buildings. So your request will be considered by the Act of Northumberland Board, and what I can say to you is, I've asked them to copy me in on the response, and you will get a response from the Act of Northumberland Board.
Supplementary? No, thank you. Right, can the microphone go over to councillor Roughhead? And this one come down to councillor Oliver. Councillor Roughhead to councillor Oliver.
Thank you, Chair. Just before I start, this is on the basis of a question that I sent to cabinet members at advance in this meeting, and I'd just like to thank councillor Sanderson for actually a well thought-out response to that, most that I didn't get an answer from. So following the recent vast expansion of members' champions at the cabinet meeting held on the twenty-fourth of May, twenty nineteen, and given the scope responsibility, responsibility and powers of members' champions vary drastically across local authorities, ranging from just championing their designated issue, operating a small grant system, to being allocated a small budget or being used as an additional de facto deputy cabinet members, moving forward, would it not therefore be pertinent and formative and good governance practice for the exact terms of reference of Northumberland County Council's member champions to be added to this council's constitution?
Councillor Oliver.
Thank you, councillor Roughhead. The first point I'd make is, I think there are seven champions were reinstated in the May meeting, which I believe was up from six previously, so I don't think by any stretch it's, it's a vast expansion. I think the, these champions do some really, really good work. You know, we've heard in, in the past two years from councillor Ledger about the work that he did as the Armed Forces Champion, and I, the councillor in my adjacent ward, councillor Sessford, does some really good work as the mental health champion. I think it's really important to give these councillors the opportunity to, to champion those areas in a way that they see fit, and I, I don't see any need at all to have any sort of formal terms of reference. These are positions without a, a formal budget, and I think, you know, each councillor will deal with this in a different way.
Supplementary?
Thank you, but just in response to that, looking at what other councils do in the constitution, I just think that's very, very poor practice because other councils state exactly what the terms of reference to their member champions are within the council. And the question is, Chair, given that this, this council has actually won some fantastic awards in terms of our work with equalities and diversity, I'm a bit dismayed that we haven't actually got an equalities and diversity champion. Is that something that will be forthcoming?
I, I think there's a lot of, I mean, we've heard previously at previous council meetings about the excellent work that's being done on equality and diversity. I'm happy to discuss that with the relevant portfolio holders and get back to you.
Question seven, councillor Roughhead to councillor Oliver.
Thank you. The local government act two thousand forced the former Northumberland County Council to change its executive arrangements to either an elected man cabinet model, subject to a referendum, or leader and cabinet model, with the latter being the one that was adopted and the model which was then inherited by the current Northumberland County Council, a unitary authority created in two thousand and nine. Upon the abolition of the former county borough and district councils, given that the introduction of the Localism Act twenty eleven allows principal authorities to revert to a committee system, has there since two thousand and eleven ever been a report or review undertaken by this council to analyse the merits and drawbacks of the various models of executive arrangements available to Northumberland County Council?
Councillor Oliver.
Thank you. No.
Thank you. Supplementary?
Given that, since this has been a unitary authority and no political party across Northumberland has had a majority mandate for, it's always been minority administrations, is this something that could potentially be reviewed?
I don't see any reason to review it. I think we've had three administrations operating the current model. Those three administrations have all been happy with the working model. I think if it ain't, if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Thank you. Right, let's move on. To receive the minutes of the cabinet meetings held on firstly Friday the twenty-fourth of May, pages twenty-three to twenty-eight, councillor Jackson, leader of the council.
Right, dear, thank you, Chair. In that particular meeting, I'd just like to draw attention to two major projects that we were happy to support on behalf of the council. First one is on page twenty-four, where we've got actually the awarding of the building contract for the Swan Centre site in Berwick-upon-Tweed at twenty and a half million pounds. And I think that's a, a major investment in that particular community. And then secondly, on page twenty-five, we've sponsored a three point four six million pound business case into the new Northumberland rail line. And we're happy to be able to report that just a week ago, that particular project was put forward to the Transforming Cities Fund that the government has called for project for. And it's been agreed to as a regional priority, and it is on the main priority list. So we're really pleased to get the support of our partners right across the region for that one, but they would not have done this, they'd done it without a sound business case, and that's what this council has provided. So that's great news for the whole county.
And Tuesday, the eleventh of June?
Yeah, this, this, this was a really serious council meet, cabinet meeting, in which we had commissioned a report by our council officers into our council's response to climate change. And I, I think we were pleased to note the amount of progress that this council had made already. So we've reduced our carbon dioxide emissions by more than thirty percent in the last ten years through a whole load of programmes that most of us who've been here for a while recognise, like putting solar panels onto our school roofs and, and putting ground source heat pumps into many of our public buildings and fire stations. But there is an awful lot more that we need to do, and we need to tell the public what we are doing on their behalf. Now, we take this very seriously indeed, and we think it is a moral duty of this council as for itself to show that it can be carbon neutral by twenty thirty, and we will do that. But we need to do that in a way of, of leadership, and we need to make sure that our whole county is actually thinking individually and on a business by business basis, what they are going to do to meet that challenge of being carbon neutral by, by twenty thirty. There will be an, an, a, a natural working group set up, which my colleague might want to, might talk about in the, in the minute. But we, you know, we're serious about this. It's about practical actions, it's about actions to, for which we, as a council, can be held to account for. So it's not just warm words, we're actually going to deliver actions that will make a real difference and reduce the impact that we have on the climate and on the wonderful environment of Northumberland. So I, I, I really do hope that the whole council can, can get behind this, and I believe that we will. Thank you.
Right, I've got councillor Deal.
Thank you, everybody. And I think it's a positive response. And I think one or two things I would like to bring and ask you to address is the refuse recycling vehicles. I get constant complaints about them and their emissions. I email the council, I never get a response, and that must be one of our priorities because you can see the emissions is flying about the place throughout the air, and it's horrific. So that would be an easy win. There's some local companies who do develop all kinds of neutral, carbon neutral engines, et cetera. The other thing is just to ask you, if you look at the other side of the end of the side of the coin, is actually ensuring that we cut back on the amount of energy we actually use. And that means looking at schools to make sure that they are, are not having to use all the energy they need to, to keep warm, et cetera, et cetera. So when you do this, I would like you to see, I'd like to see both sides of the coin, and not just what you're doing to stop the use of, or to cut, cut the, cut backs on the, on the emissions, but also, you know, what are you going to do to stop using energy?
Councillor Gallagher.
Thank you, Chair. Welcome this report from the Labour Group. There's one thing we would like to do is work in tandem with this because Labour had statements out well before, you know, this authority decided to do anything. And we'll have to keep an eye on the neighbouring authorities as well, because we, we are behind their statements as well and their reports. It's a very, very important thing that, you know, that we have to address, and Labour, the Labour Group of this county realise that. Thank you.
Councillor Grimshaw.
Thank you, Chair. I also would like to request that the county should share all that information and what they plan to do with the town and parish councils, so they can also formulate their ideas as to what we can do to help the climate change too, if possible, please. So I would like, you know, all the town and parish councils to be aware of this, what our priorities are, so as I say, we work in tension with each other. Thank you.
But before I bring in councillor Sanderson, councillor Bowman, I do have a welcome for you later on in the agenda, but councillor Bowman.
It's to the leader, just clarification. Within this paragraph section responsibility to climate change, you got the date, twenty twenty-five. In your speech, you were caught in twenty thirty. Can you clarify, please?
Before councillor Sanderson goes, I've been on this council a long time, and I went to an event, I think Dave Ledger was there, and it was at Longhurst Hall, McDonald, what's that, Lindenhall?
Somewhere.
Yeah, somewhere up that road. And, and it was called The Heater's On, and that was a long time ago. I don't know if you recall it, Dave?
I do, Chair, and I was the member champion for the, for the North East of England on climate change. And the work that's been done over the years has been quite significant, but it's never been quick enough.
So we're all to blame?
Well, we all have our finger in the pot to, to make sure things sometimes happen, but also sometimes things don't happen, but.
Okay. Councillor Sanderson.
Thanks, just a few very quick points. I'd like to know which council you're talking about as being ahead of us. I think we are actually ahead of the game. We're always happy to talk to other councils in the combined authority and around the region, but I think, I think we are ahead of everyone else close by. We're certainly working very closely with parish and town councils, and as some of you may know, I invited parish and town councils to our recycling centre in Sleepburn, and we had a fantastic response. We've already had some tours, and all the, all the councillors that came were very grateful and very interested, and they are part of how we're going to roll out the programme of increasing our recycling ability and our green agenda. The steering group will be, of course, we'll report back, it's going to be scrutinised on a regular basis, the work that we do, but we will be including groups such as Friends of the Earth, Climate Action Northumberland, VCS, and others. And the other point was around the twenty twenty-five and twenty thirty, the, the point you asked about, it actually, it actually makes it clearer in, in the bullet points, but what we're saying is that we want to see the county become, to halve our carbon footprint by twenty twenty-five, and we want to help, with the help of government, we want to help the county become carbon neutral by twenty thirty. Very big asks, both of them, but that's the reason we've set up this steering group is to plot some actions that we can take at an early stage to get us up and running into, into meeting those targets. And as I say, they will be scrutinised, those targets will be scrutinised, and the actions will be scrutinised by the scrutiny committee. All I would say is it would mean a lot to us if all of you could get behind this, and I think, when I, when I've spoken to the press, I think I've said that I'm sure all councillors feel equally strongly, that this is a hugely important matter. Of course, libraries are and swimming pools are, potholes are, but at the end of the day, for the next generation and the generation after that, we have a duty and an obligation to give this our very best shot. And if it means we've got to find money to meet this, then we will. And I'll be coming forward in, in the autumn with some ideas, and I hope very much we can have a cross-party consensus. It might cost us a little bit of money, but we all have a duty. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on. Councillor Doham?
Thank you. So, just a point of clarification, when you talk about the working group, is that going to be a cross-party working group?
I said steering group, not working.
Or steering group. Is it going to be cross-party?
We will. The answer to that is no, because we think it's more important to get the voluntary groups involved and the campaign groups involved. I will be the only, I might ask councillor Oliver to come along to the occasional meeting of his role, but I will be the only elected member involved.
Okay, in that, you know, I think we've been very clear in our support for this, this move and this policy, both publicly and privately. So I am extremely disappointed that you're actually not doing the formal processes involving the, the opposition party.
Councillor Jackson, to sum up.
Yeah, no, I can just address that point first in particular. This report has already been to the cross-party scrutiny committee and dealt with in detail, and we think the scrutiny process would be the cross-party mechanism to deal with this, and we'll take their views really seriously along the way. So there will be cross-party work, but that, that was the way of doing it, rather than duplicating anything else, because I think we can deal with that within the processes. The, the one point was made about, about energy use in schools. I'd, I'd made the point that for quite a number of years, this council's been investing in particularly solar panels on schools to reduce their energy use. We'll look at it, we'll look at it again, it will be part of the action plan. The council's buildings will be part of the action plan, and in particular, the refurbished county hall will be an awful lot more energy efficient than the current one that we're in. On top of that, we're looking at installing quite a significant amount of solar power on the car park at the back, which is a huge area, which is actually probably going to potentially generate point eight of a megawatt, which is huge, and we'll have
And we'll have battery storage on the back of that. So this building and this site will be actually more than self-sufficient in energy. One area that I think that this council hasn't been doing anywhere near enough on is actually recycling. So we got to a recycling rate of around about 40% five or six years ago. Since then, there has been no progress whatsoever. And people in the community are very often talking to me about this, you know, why don't we recycle more in Northumberland? Well, we're going to have a start and make some real progress and we'll get up to 50% and up to 60% after that. So that will all be part of the action plan. So with that, I do commend these papers and this report to the council. We do take on board that we are actually in an emergency situation, that's why we've agreed to call it a climate change emergency, because that's a spur to action and it's a spur to action for all of us, from the cabinet, from the scrutiny to this wider working group. And we'll all work together and make sure that we're actually, it's not just words, it's actions that will make a real difference to our county. Thank you.
Councillor Jackson said you wanted to sum up, but I have got two further bits then, because we are on this together, as we say, I'll go to councillor Gallagher, as long as it's brief, and councillor Dickinson.
Well, thank you very much for that. And the word together didn't seem to come across that very well. Cross-party needs to be cross-party.
That is in scrutiny, it was said.
But the thing is, we can do that and every committee we can work and we can work positively on this and there's a better, more productive way to do it. The reality is, and that was the point, my point is that we are being once again excluded from any debates, or most debates, I should say. But I just want to come back to page 34 and at the top, it says you're going to reduce the, I'll just put my glasses on. You know, you've given commitment to improve by 10% in the next year. Same again, also, also. It's still very vague, we've got to work towards deadlines that we are going to be a productive council, working towards climate change.
Councillor Dickinson.
Thank you very much, Chair. It was just a quick follow-on from councillor Dunworth. Obviously, the Labour Group wished to support this. The leader referred to 10 years of improvements over a period of a number of administrations that everybody's been working on. Scrutiny's very different to a steering group. If we want true partnership work, the steering group has to have participation from a cross-party group of elected officials, because whatever happens next, you know, after the next election, we want the continuation of the green agenda set out by this council on a cross-party basis to continue. We don't want it to stop. And, you know, it's just a little bit strange that when people are trying to support something that you're putting forward, that you don't, or you wish to exclude them from some kind of steering programme.
I thought it was meant in that way, so.
Currently, our recycling rate's 36%. That's clearly not good enough. What we're saying here is that we would like to see that improve. It says in the next year, so it might take longer than that, but we're trying to get to a 50% rate within the next five years. That's a big ask. One of the first actions we'll be doing is to undertake a pilot of glass recycling and I'll lay out the details of that in the autumn. We don't know what that will produce, but if we don't try and go through this pilot, we'll never know whether we can actually roll that out across the county. That'll be one of the initiatives we're taking, along with a number of others. But it is very much our firm wish to see that recycling rate improve. And if we can get to 50% within five years, then I think we'll have done very well and that's certainly our target.
Right, I'll take Derek Kennedy before the leader again. Down. Councillor Kennedy.
Thank you, Chair. And obviously, you know, I think you've heard all the words today. Everybody's supportive of the climate change action, so, you know, all positive that the county council's going to do something about that and, you know, that's all positive. Just an observation from myself, I mean, I got elected here 2005, so I've been here quite a long time. And one thing I've always observed about us being councillors, and I include myself in that, is that I have never yet, since 2005, had a telephone meeting or an electronic meeting between councillors and officers. It's all about face to face and mileage and coming to Morpeth. And you look at the mileage claims and obviously that turns into carbon emissions, vehicles travelling all over. It's a large county, we all know, we all have to do it. You know, so it's no criticism, it's an observation, is that we are travelling all over the place. We are part of that problem. You know, why aren't we doing electronic meetings? I understand that there's rules around certain things, obviously this type of meeting has to be face to face, et cetera, but there must be meetings in here that could be challenged to say, actually, if I need to be in a meeting, me from Hexham and somebody's in Berwick and somebody's in Rothbury and somebody's in Kildare, why can't that be done electronically as opposed to sending everybody in a car, getting to Morpeth, having that meeting and then going back again? There must be that. I mean, I work for a government, a big government department, and we've done loads of this for years and years and years, trying to reduce our carbon emission down via that means it reduces your costs and it just wastes the travelling time. So please, let's look at ourselves as well in this, because I really think we need to challenge ourselves and be part of that solution and not part of that problem.
Okay, finally councillor Carty, now I'll go. We're getting extra time on this because we've withdrawn one.
Well, I'll be very quick.
You will, I know.
Thank you very much. Right, I want to come back to the steering group, on the cross-party steering group, and I challenge our decision not to have a cross-party. So I want to propose a motion in here today that we do have a cross-party steering group for climate change. And I feel really strongly about this, this is why I'm challenging it and this is why I'm proposing the motion.
Can I bring the leader in, because you might have something to say on that?
Two things. Firstly, on councillor Kennedy's point, you know, a very serious point. And we have been looking as a whole council about the way it works and we've had this sort of moniker called new ways of working around for quite a long time. And we've been talking about mobile working, but actually it's starting to happen more and more right across the council in terms of what the officers do, in terms of the way we work as councillors. I think we all probably do more from home than ever before, but we need to do more. And the technology in terms of video conferencing that you're talking about would have to be available more widely than it is now. And that's about digital capability right across the county and we're trying to do, improve that as we go along. Actually, we've just got an award of an extra £12 billion from central government for that very thing. So we'll take the point on board and it will become part of our action plan and we'll definitely take that on board. In terms of cross-party working, we actually do want to be inclusive as a council and we don't want you to feel excluded in the way that you're feeling today. So my offer to you is, we've kind of set out the rough processes and the way that we want to take it forward. Can we meet with your leadership outside of this meeting and then find a way to take it forward? Because we genuinely don't want people to feel excluded. The way all councillors can get involved is through the process that I was talking about, through clear reports, open to scrutiny and that detailed questioning that could happen in a scrutiny working group. But I'm quite happy to look at it an alternative way forward on that one with you. Okay, thank you.
Right, we have, the leader summed up on that, but I'll allow you.
Can I just say, I think it's important that everybody's involved, because everybody has good ideas. And I mean that in all sincerity. I sit here and people have not and haven't got the ability to put forward ideas that could be put forward, which should help this council and help the people of Northumberland. What I would ask you then for is to arrange a day for the whole council, sorry, you could do it after full council, at another council meeting, for all councillors to come here and have a chat with various officers to put their ideas forward, because all of us represent different areas. We all have different levels at which we can actually recognise where we can make a difference. If you live in Morpeth, you're different. If you live in Allendale, you're a different area. I live in the middle of nowhere and I can tell you something, there's not much you can do there. However, there's ideas all across and to have a working group, not a working group, have a day when people can sit down and talk and have a general chat and be all-inclusive would be good for the people of Northumberland.
Before I go to councillor Sanderson, if you read the report on 34, it says councillor Dodd commented that he would like to see more initiatives for hydroelectric power in the county had the ideal topography to support this. So there are ideas. Councillor Sanderson.
Yeah, one of the initial ideas that we've already had is to have a Blue Sky Day for all members. That will happen and I would imagine it'll be in the autumn now, but that definitely will happen and you will all be invited and we hope very much you'll participate in that.
Okay, right, let's move on to receive considered minutes of the following committees. One, corporate services and economic growth, page 39. Councillor Vaughan.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move the minutes of the corporate services and economic growth overview and scrutiny committee on the 10th of June, pages 39 to 44. Thank you.
Anything on there? No one is raising a hand. Happy with that, yes? Except, move on to item two, family and children's services overview and scrutiny, pages 45 to 50. Councillor Renner Thompson.
Thank you, Chair. Hereby present the minutes of the family and children's services overview and scrutiny committee, held on the 4th of April. A few things for members to note. We had a review on implementation of the post-16 transport policy, which you'll all remember, which showed an increasing number of students taking it up, which the committee was happy with. And some more good news on page 48. You'll see the schools there that are benefiting from the opportunity, north east initiative coming from central government, Berwick Academy, Blythe Academy, James Calvert Spence and the Duke Secondary School in Ashington. And the committee were very happy that those schools had been chosen.
Okay, I see no indications. Item three, communities in place overview scrutiny, pages 51 to 56. Councillor Reed. Close yours.
Thank you, Chair. Move the minutes of the communities in over, please? Too much coffee before I got here, that's what that is. Communities in place overview and scrutiny committee, pages 51 to 56. And can I just say on the future plans, I look forward to seeing some of this climate change stuff come to this scrutiny committee. I'm sure we'll do a good job. But as far as I'm concerned, there is something more pressing than climate change in the next four or five months, which is a no-deal Brexit, which we may be facing. And I would like to think that this scrutiny committee could look at the plan that we've got, if one should exist. What impact is that going to have on the county, on employment, on where we get our engine spares, all of that stuff? I would like to see that come to this committee as well. Thank you.
Okay, next, no, sorry, councillor Gallagher at the back.
Thank you. Can I go to page 54, please, at the top of the page? And it says, action should be taken to ensure that stall holders offer shoppers goods that are not in competition with those businesses in the area. It's good to hear this, that the council are supporting local businesses within towns that have a market and that pay Northumberland County Council rates. Thank you.
Councillor Deal.
Thank you very much. Just once again on the market strategy, I do have quite a lot of history of working with markets. I started the Hexham farmers' market off 2000 and also other ones. They are incredibly difficult to maintain healthy budgets in running these markets. However, we did, at Tyndale, we did look at ways of delivering, other options of delivering. I think what you might like to do is, there's no indication here that you're actually going to discuss further with any other town boroughs or councils that actually manage markets. And Darlington do a very good one. But you might have an idea, because we looked at privatising them, letting them out to the private sector, whatever, to run. And there's all kinds of things, but you have to make a decision. But one of the things is that you actually need maybe to find somebody who knows how to run a modern market, because it's very different from the old type of market.
Okay. Yes, go on.
Thanks. I'm not sure whether that was a question, but if you'd been at this scrutiny meeting, we did cover that ground and it was, we've had a thorough discussion about how best to keep our markets going. But at the end of the day, market towns should have a market and we want to see markets flourish and we will do everything we can to make them flourish. There will be a cost to that and we're doing our very best to make that cost neutral at the moment. We are looking at other options and we'll continue to look at other options. But at the end of the day, it's up to the people of Northumberland to come and help us make these markets successful. And so I hope very much more people will come to their local market town and enjoy the markets that are there, because they are actually really good markets.
Councillor Dunworth.
Thank you. I just wondered, under the second bullet point in the report, it talks about two markets that we're continuing to struggle. Which of those two markets, please?
Anybody?
These are the two that require some help from us setting up and taking down. That is an extra cost that's attached to those markets specifically, so when we're looking at all the markets together, those two carry a greater overhead cost because of that taking down and putting up of the stalls.
So which two are they?
They are Morpeth and Ashington.
Right, okay. Just following on from that, I think the issue over markets is far bigger than markets. It is about the state of our local economy. It is about austerity. It is about communities that are really struggling. And whilst all the markets might be struggling across Northumberland, I think in some areas they're struggling even more. And we need to be careful in any strategy that we develop, that we bear that in mind and ensure that, you know, it isn't necessarily one size fits all. We need to offer that greater support for some areas than others.
But yet, you know, it's interesting at point, because some of the best stalls are the ones that are selling niche products at actually quite a high price. So people don't go to markets necessarily to get cheap produce and fill their bags with what they think are bargains necessarily. People are going to markets increasingly to get that niche product they can't get in other shops. And I think as long as that continues and that trend continues, then that's the way to build up the markets. I don't think austerity comes into it.
Okay. Item four, health and wellbeing overview and scrutiny, 57 to 62. Councillor Watson.
Good afternoon, councillors. I'd like to present the minutes of the health and wellbeing overview and scrutiny committee meeting on the 30th of April. I think I'd like to point out on page 59, there's some very interesting facts there about the possibility of us leaving the EU and the effects that that may have on the NHS. I think if you read that, you'll find it's very interesting and perhaps not exactly what you might have expected. That's all I'd like to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't see anybody. Let's move on to the next one. Health and wellbeing board, pages 63 to 68, which is mine. Anything on here? Cannot see anybody. So we'll move on, are we happy with that? Move on to six, audit committee, pages 69 to 76.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move the minutes of the audit committee on the 22nd of May, as set out on pages 69 to 76.
Any discussion? Can we take as read? Okay. Item seven, standards committee. I know it's not your committee, councillor Armstrong, but you are the vice-chairman. Can you present these? Pages 77 to 80.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to present the minutes of the standards committee, held on the 25th of October, and as stated, pages 77 to 80.
Councillor Hill. But be aware that councillor Armstrong is the vice-chairman.
Thank you, Chair. I've got three points that concern me from accuracy and fairness and clarity. The first is that reading on page 78, the R Harvey versus Ledbury Town Council judgment, if you were just reading that, you would not... if you were just reading that, you would not be aware that Herefordshire Council cleared councillor Harvey of all allegations. So I think that that minute should include that, because if you read that and you weren't aware of the facts of the case, you wouldn't be aware of that. The second point, just two other quick points. It also says here, it was unlikely that the Ledbury situation could happen in Northumberland, where the monitoring officer and chief NALC officer are in regular contact. The problem in Ledbury, I know it's another branch, was the very poor advice given to them by NALC, which suggested that they would be able to fight a judicial review case brought by councillor Harvey. So that seems a strange point. And the final one is regarding the committee on standards and public life, review of ethical framework, which is a very large document, and there'll need to be further discussion on this. But you may recall, many months ago, I opposed just reappointing the independent person without opening up for recruitment. And other guidelines in this regarding the independent person, regarding such things as terms of office, are not being adhered to by this council.
Thank you. Anybody else? No, I can't see. Item eight, Brexit and devolution working group. Councillor Jackson, 81 to 86.
I'm just happy to present the minutes for that working group. Thank you, Chair.
Anybody on this? I see no one. We can agree then and move on. Councillor Dickinson.
It's just a point of information that we appear not to have been represented, and our representatives can't recall an invite to that, so I don't know if something happened. But I could be completely wrong, or I could have been there and just not recorded. Who knows? It'll be one or the other, and we'll get back to you.
We will seek to clarify. Okay, can we agree those? Right. Item nine, report of the returning officer, and it's the electoral division for, sadly, Bernard departed, for the Hollywell ward, and I can now welcome Lesley Bowman of the Labour Party to our 67 members. Lesley, welcome.
No, you don't get to chance to speak. But you've already done it. Item 10 is pulled. 11, report of the chief executive. Darlejean.
Thank you, Chair. So this is a proposal regarding boundary changes in the parishes of, well, it's in Newton and Seghill and Seaton Delaville electoral divisions. So basically, as you can see on the map, there's a proposal to basically switch A and B to align these parishes. And as far as I can see, everybody is happy with that, so I propose the recommendations.
It has been... Is it seconded? Do you do want to speak?
I do.
You do? Proposing seconded, councillor Reed.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, first of all, just wanted to say, this isn't good enough to place as any. People have been talking about how long they've been on this council. Can I just remind you that this council is 10 years old? You forget, those of you that were county councillors before, you seem to think that you kind of consumed the boroughs in the districts. You didn't. It was a merger. This council is 10 years old. Right. Then, all I wanted to say about this is I welcome this. The only word of caution that I've got is that I think it was, we saw this map in Blythe Town Council, and I said, oh, I wonder if there's any houses in there? And it was then that we went through all this process, and we stood here a couple of months ago, and we changed the parish and town council boundaries to the road. Now, why at the time a little light bulb didn't spring above somebody's head and thought, well, yeah, if that's the, we're going to need to change that too, we should have done them both at the same time. But the real serious point I wanted to make is, as we're building more and more houses in Northumberland, can we have somebody check that when planning permissions come in, where those parish boundaries are? And if we need to move them, we should have it kind of on the planning agenda? There's one in Amble, I think? So there's definitely one in Amble, where there's going to be a whole street in Hadston, where people are going to use Amble all the time? So I don't know what the mechanism would be, but can we just have somebody, when these planning applications come in, can we just check to see where the parish boundaries are, and if they need to be moved, then let's start that process? Because I think this makes us look a bit foolish, when you've got 18, well, nine or 10 houses, they've got their own special box at the polling station and use them, because otherwise they'd have to drive to Seghill. So it just makes us look a bit daft. So can we make certain that when we're doing these things, that somebody has the responsibility to check where those boundaries are? Thank you.
Are you happy with this? Can we move on? Agreed? Move on. Finally, one, can we agree the Castlemore with local area council requested that councillor Liz Dunn as vice-chair in place of councillor Scott Dickinson?
That was a coup, yeah.
That is a coup, yes. Thank you for your attendance. That's been a good one, hasn't it? Five past four. Thank you.